And welcome. It is November 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And this is the first regular City Commission meeting of the Orman Beach City Commission. We are in commission chambers and I hope you felt welcomed this evening by Captain Chris Ruse, police captain, and our Leisure Services Director, Robert Carrollon, who served as our greeters tonight. I'd like to introduce the folks sitting up in front of you, to my right, your left. We have Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart. Down in front, we have City Clerk Susan Daughters. Back up on the dais, we have Randy Hayes, City Attorney. Commissioner from Zone 1 Dwight Selby.
Good evening.
Commissioner from Zone 2 Troy Kent. To my left and your right, our Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner Susan Persis. Commissioner Rob Littleton. And down in front, City Manager Joyce Shanahan and Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington and I'd ask you at this time to silence your cellphones. And we'll have the invocation given by Pastor Mike Petrick from Harvard Baptist Church. Please rise.
Let us pray. Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to be here in this chamber. I pray, God, that you would be welcomed here as well and that you would have your eyes upon all things that are done today. Lord, we know that you always have your eye upon us and we're grateful for that. And I pray you bless everything that's preceded tonight. Lord, I pray that the tone and the agenda of all things, Lord, will be done good for the best of our city. Lord, we appreciate, I appreciate, living here. It's a great place. Father, it's just an incredible place to have for my family as well. But, God, I pray you bless those that are in charge, Lord, each person, from the mayor all the way down. God, I pray that all things be done to your glory. Lord, thank you for our first responders, Lord, our Police Department, the Fire Department, and each one of these, they're heroes. They truly, truly are. And, God, I pray that you would just lift them up, strengthen them, help them to know they're very much appreciated. Lord, bless again all that's done tonight. Again, we come to you with grateful hearts. We know this year is passing quickly. It's been a real tough, very long year, but, Lord, you've been gracious in all things. May we honor you in tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience remarks. Tonight, we start with Travis Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Commissioners, Travis Sargent, 406 North B Street. At the October 19th meeting, the Commission voted four to one to donate $20,000 for a bronze statue of Dr. Mary McLeod-Bythune. The statue will be located in Daytona Beach. All the taxpayers will receive for this is the name of Orman Beach at the base of the statue. When you look her name up on Wikipedia, it never once referenced the city of Orman Beach. I'm not saying she didn't have an impact on our community. It's just not referenced. The day after the marble statue was unveiled, I went and viewed it. It was truly amazing. More importantly is the story of Dr. Mary McLeod-Bythune. In my readings of her, I'm certain that she would not have wanted the city to donate $20,000 for a statue. She was always seeking donations to keep her school operating. A better use of the $20,000 would have been to set up a scholarship for the Pace Center in Orman Beach in the name of Dr. Mary McLeod-Bythune. This could have helped empower a little boy or little girl. As she once said, "Invest in the human soul. Who knows? It might be a diamond in the rough." So tonight, I stand before you and have a request. On September 30th, K-9 Officer Kane was retired and passed away shortly thereafter. Unfortunately, the Orman Beach Police Department was not the recipient of the aftermath K-9 grant. With that being said, it would be great if the City Commission would make a motion tonight to donate $20,000 to Orman Beach Police Department for the cost of obtaining a new K-9 and training. As mentioned, for the donation with Dr. Mary McLeod-Bythune's statue, any amount under $25,000 the City Manager can authorize this payment without it coming back to the Commission. This is a motion for public safety for the citizens of Orman Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. And Jim Schultz.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. Seeing as we're talking about influential citizens, talking about a current citizen, Dr. McCullough, he's been in the news, mostly attacked, actually, as an influencer of misinformation. Of course, sometimes the people that call misinformation are actually the misinformation keepers or creators. Just wanted to, I often, well, actually, he lives here in town on the river. And what I want to get to is the issue on COVID. Because I think Australia is a preview of what we can expect in the future if things keep on going the direction they're going. And extreme lockdowns, a pass to be able to be tracked away from your house so that if you're deviating to an area you're not allowed to be in, you can be reprimanded. Oh, and they're taking houses, foreclosing them when the people aren't prompt in paying up their fines. So this isn't polite. It's getting sort of brutal. And I think we have a lot of the people, well, our governor's trying to deactivate this concept of if you don't do what we say medically, you have no right to work. Because we have people doing protests now in New York City and other cities, people that serve us to protect us. And even in the military, they're threatening to take and go for all the training costs of like the special forces. So if you spend a million or two to actually train them, hey, you can destroy them. What a wonderful benefit. But I think when Dr. Peter McCullough was just speaking to a convention of doctors, I think that probably covered most, all the situations as far as the vaccination issues and the other alternative treatments and where we're actually heading. And I think it's time people should maybe pay attention. So that's really where I, well, I'm never quite sure what I'm going to speak about when I come here, but I did want to cover that. I sent you the article by McCullough. And he's a good one.
Thank you, Jim. Approval of the minutes, the minutes have been sent to the Commission for review and posted to the city's website. These are from October 19th, 2021, the regular City Commission meeting. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, just need a motion to approve.
I move approval of the minutes from the City Commission meeting on October 19th, 2021.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, just one item. Item D.
Item D. Need a motion to approve consent agenda absent item D.
I'll move the consent agenda minus item D.
I'll second that motion.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Six D.
Disposition item titled 2022 Tamoka Marathon Sponsorship.
And Commissioner Kent?
Yes. I am appreciative that this event will not cost the taxpayers of Orman Beach any money, and that's a big change from where it was years ago. But I'm totally against this, and I'm going to tell you why. This is a financial windfall for the gentleman, Mr. Don Stoner, in my opinion, who puts this on. And I think, we have Robert Carrollon in the audience, I believe that our staff could create an event as good, if not better. And the citizens of Orman Beach could reap the rewards of that financial windfall from all the out-of-town guests that want to come in and participate in this run and the locals that want to run. You know, they all pay the same fee, but Orman Beach could reap the benefits of that instead of an individual who I believe, unless something's changed, doesn't live in our city, comes in, holds the event, makes the money, and leaves. I just think it would be, it would be better for our community, and I am confident our staff could do equal, if not better, with this event. It has changed the name, of course. I think he has rights to the name, but we could change it to something snazzy. That would, that would be fantastic. So I'm a hard no on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know a lot about putting on races, but I know the people who do promote them are experts at it. There's a lot of technical issues associated with running a marathon race. And chances are, if our staff did do it, they'd probably hire a consultant like Mr. Stoner's company to actually run the race for the city. So I think we'd end up in the same position. And furthermore, I think it'd be really slippery of the city to steal and to copy the idea, to not allow Mr. Stoner, who's been doing this for nine years now, I think, to do what he's been doing and then, and then take it away from, pull the rug out from under him. So I'm a hard yes.
And just a comment for that, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind?
Sure.
So there may be a consultation fee, you know, the first year until we get it under our belt and we're able to handle it. But even with that consultation fee, it would still be a financial plus positive for the residents of Orman Beach. And, you know, what do they say? The greatest way to flatter someone is to, is to take their idea? Flattered by it.
Commissioner Persis?
Back a long time ago, I used to run races and marathons, and I know that there is a lot involved in, you know, putting together a race. It's quite extensive with everything that has to be done. I'm just not sure that, I think the city would want to get involved with that. I haven't had anyone tell me that, so unless I heard that, I would, I would just definitely be in favor of this.
Anyone else? I, the problem I have is that, I guess I just don't have my questions answered, and that's as much my fault with not getting to staff soon enough. But the definition of a nonprofit civic organization, is that what the city of Orman Beach is? I mean, we're not a 501(c)(3). It's not like Orman Main Street or some other non, a true nonprofit civic organization. And then my other question is, when you look at the Code of Ordinances, I'm not even sure Mr. Stoner would want to have us sponsor this because as I read Section 15-102, the general criteria for approval of a permit, A9, and of course, it goes through 12 of them, but number nine says if an event is sponsored or cosponsored by the city, all funds raised by the event shall, after the payment of expenses incurred or provided by the city associated with the event, be remitted to the city. And so that's the first time I've delved that deep into it, but...
Mayor, it might be a hard yes.
That's what I wondered.
I love your homework tonight. I love it.
Six or seven years of back whatever, but, I mean, it may not be beneficial for them to have the city sponsor it just so they can serve beer. They could serve apple juice or something like that. And then who, where do they get the beer? Is it coming from one of our restaurants? Because the ordinance seems to favor having a local restaurant provide that was another question, so, Robert.
Well, yeah, just, just for, you know, first of all, when we started the process of trying to develop the Tamoka Marathon or a marathon here in Orman, we basically reached out, just sort of like Commissioner Selby mentioned, we reached out to Don and asked if he would be interested in doing it for us. So that's how this began. Part of that was so that he would partner with us for the mayor's health and fitness program that we offer here in the city of Orman Beach, which he did that for the first year or so. And then he requested, you know, some relief in the, in the rent payment for some of the facilities that he uses. Currently, this, what you got in front of you now is essentially no different than if any for-profit or nonprofit would have come into our community and said, hey, I want to run a, I want to do a marathon in your community. They, which they could do, obviously, through our rental agreements. This, Don Stoner pays for absolutely everything. He pays for all the police and fire. He pays for all the rental that the, of the casements, Fort Trinato, for all the area and spaces that he uses as a for-profit entity, which is, which is more than what it would be if it was a nonprofit, because a nonprofit is 50% less than what a for-profit is. So he sort of pays the going rate for anybody that would come into our community and actually run a race like this. The difference between if we were to do it in-house is just the, this prestige that we get for this race, it is a qualifier for the Boston Marathon. You know, there's a lot of prestige that goes along with that, and it draws people from all over the United States and even outside of the United States. Where, where our reach would be much less, it would serve Orman Beach residents absolutely and our surrounding areas, but I don't know if we would be capable of drawing such a large umbrella, I guess, or blanket over to where we could bring more people in. Plus, it also gives us credibility here in Orman Beach because there's, the people that we draw from all over the United States and even outside of that area, they're coming to Orman Beach, and it's putting us on the map for the purpose of the Tamoka Marathon. So those are some of the things that, that if you really, yeah, we could probably do it. Could we, could we reach out that broad and make that big a difference and put Orman Beach on the map specifically for this purpose? It would be quite difficult, especially with the staffing levels we have. Knowing that we would have full expense, we would, we would, we would have the burden of the use of our facilities, the use of our PD, our fire, and still have the congestion for the roads and probably have a much less attendance because we wouldn't have that reach. And those are all speculations, but, but the reality most likely would end up there. It would be cool to do it. I hear you, because that would be sort of fun to be able to do it ourselves, but I just, I'm not sure we would be as successful. The only advantage for Don to even request this is for the purpose of doing a beer garden. That, that was it. So he can offer a beer at the end of the race, the after-party. And outside of that, there's really no advantage to him whatsoever. Because we really don't, we don't do much, anything else other than give him the opportunity to do that. So, I mean, if you decide you don't want to approve this, that's, it's not going to really, not that, he can still rent the facility, he can still run the program, he can still do the race, so it really is not going to be that big of an effect outside of just the idea of the beer garden. So I'm just giving you the information, and that's...
Thank you, Robert. What I didn't hear in there was an answer to my question. Commissioner Kent?
And that's exactly what I was going to say, Mayor, is that you brought up a great question, which hopefully we'll get an answer for before we decide and vote on this. And Robert Carrollon, I'm going to start this with, I'm a big fan of yours, you know that. I don't know that I appreciate the doom and gloom of the city not being able to do something as well or reach out as far as a private individual for profit. And I'm not one for patting people on the back for doing the right thing. My son and I just had a real healthy conversation about him returning something he found on the ground to the rightful owner when he saw it drop, and he expected me to, I don't know, maybe give him a reward. And it was a great conversation about, this is called doing the right thing, and I'm not going to do that. So for Mr. Stoner to, for me or anybody to pat him on the back because he's paying for the police and he's paying the full rate to rent it, he's also taking all the profits, all of them, okay? And, you know, some people might have short memories in this city. I, for one, do not. And I remember the first time he came in here, we were, he wanted free police, free public works, the first time, I think, in the history of the city of Orman Beach, Rockefeller Gardens? You all weren't on the commission, but the commission voted, I believe it was free usage. I asked the question here at that night, who have we ever given free usage of Rockefeller Gardens? Who? Did we ever give it to the mayor at the time? I think it was Costello or Kelly? Did we, did we give it to any local celebrity? Did we give it to the poorest person in Orman Beach? The answer was no. We've never given free rental there. But we did to Tamoka Marathon that year, unless my memory's wrong, and if it is, at the next commission meeting, I'll correct the record and state that I was wrong. But I don't have a short memory, and I was doing the math at that time, and I was blown away that, and I told him then, no ill will towards him at all. I'm always looking out for my bosses, the residents of Zone 2 in Orman Beach, always, always will. I'm loyal like that. Not saying that anybody else isn't, that's not what I'm saying. These are incredible people up here that serve you, Orman Beach. What I'm saying is, I did some homework back then, and looking at what you were paying to run a 5K or a half marathon or the full marathon, and then to find out that, you know, there were discounted rates, I believe I heard at the time at the hotel for Mr. Stoner and his crew, and then the beers that they get and the drinks they get were donated from, like, local beer distributors because they got their name on the program, like, holy cow, talk about a cash cow. You don't have to basically pay for anything except for you give everybody a T-shirt and there's a mechanism they wear when they run through, but the city's going to pay for the cops, the city's going to pay for public works, and there's a free beer that comes from some beer distributor, a free, if they don't want beer, they can have a water or whatever it is. I just thought, why, and I said it back then, why isn't the city doing that? Why aren't we reaching out and doing that? And you're right, he can do this without our sponsorship and not have the beer. But after that long comment by me, I'm still hoping to get an answer from the mayor's question about the homework he did, about those funds coming to the city if we're sponsors.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't have that answer right off the top of my head, to be honest with you.
My thought, I don't know if it would hurt it to put it off two weeks, but my thought, because I think that'd be fairer to Mr. Stoner, would you get it, put it off two weeks and get those answers and go from there.
Can we, can we find out exactly how much money he makes from this marathon or how much he has made in the past? Do we know?
I'm sure we can, we can ask him. He's here today.
Oh, oh, okay.
If you would like.
But maybe provide that in the report that comes back to us.
Thank you.
I just need a motion to continue six D.
Motion to continue six D.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote, I guess. Susan, please call the roll.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
No.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And now would be the appropriate time if any commissioner wants to comment on any of the other consent agenda items. If not, we'll move on to 7A, and I will open the public hearings.
Ordinance number 2021-37, an ordinance amending Section 22-136 minimum water rates and 22-137 minimum wastewater rates of Chapter 22 Water and Sewers of the City of Orman Beach Code of Ordinances by increasing the minimum water and sewer rates for the Hunters Ridge Flagler County DRI service area, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2021-37, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on 7A.
I move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And I will close the public hearings and move to 8A.
Ordinance number 2021-38, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2020-2021 by amending the General Fund 001, Downtown Redevelopment Trust Fund 104, Stormwater Utility Fund 107, Airport Fund 108, Economic Development Fund 110, Grant Fund 116, Financing Debt Service Fund 205, 2004 Revenue Bond Fund 211, 2010 Beachfront Park Bond Fund 220, Capital Improvements Fund 301, Equipment Renewal and Replacement Fund 302, Transportation Improvements Fund 308, Facilities Renewal and Replacement Fund 317, Water and Waste Water Fund 401, Vehicle Replacement Fund 408, Renewal and Replacement Fund 409, Water and Wastewater Consolidated Debt Service Fund 414, Water System Impact Fee Fund 434, Wastewater System Impact Fee Fund 435, 2008, 2010 Water and Sewer Bond Fund 442, 2013 Water and Sewer Bond Fund 443, 2015 Water and Sewer Bond Fund 444, 2017 Water and Sewer Bond Fund 445, Solid Waste Fund 460, General Liability Fund 504, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-38, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask our Finance Director, Kelly McGuire, to speak on this one.
Okay, she's going to put up a chart here for me. So this is very similar to the one you have in your memo. Just want to clarify, because this is a large budget amendment, that the majority of it is the budget carryforwards. So those are CIP projects, originally budgeted in 1920, maybe started in 1920, but we finished them up in 2021. So that makes up almost half of this. And then the other two large components are the bond closeouts and the transfers. So those are not dollars that even go out the door. Those are just merely accounting entries, right? So that makes up almost 10 million dollars of this. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have.
Any questions for Kelly? I think it's a very clear report, as always, Kelly. Thank you. I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2021-38.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 9A.
Discussion and Direction Item Title Volusia Forever Grant Nomination.
And I'll ask Planning Director Stephen Sprager to speak briefly on this item.
Good evening, Stephen Sprager, Planning Director. Volusia Forever was a Volusia County program that was voter-approved and taxpayer-funded. It was created in 2000 and extended in 2020. The Volusia Forever Advisory Committee is accepting land nominations for property to be considered in this acquisition program. Anyone can nominate land into the program. The program, importantly, is a willing seller program, which means the county will only purchase land from owners who want to sell their land. City staff is trying to bring awareness to the program and determine if the property owners are interested in participating in this program. To date, staff has not contacted any property owners. We'd like authorization from the Commission to go ahead and do so. And again, this is a willing participant, so if the property owner wants to withdraw at any point, they have the ability to do so. The nominations are due by November 15th, 2021, so we have a very short timetable. And after submittal, they are reviewed and ranked by the Volusia County Forever Advisory Committee. So staff is just trying to be a conduit to see if there are any property owners who are willing to do this and help them in the nomination process if they need it.
Thank you, Stephen. I'll just ask right off the bat, are these in any particular order?
They are not.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Stephen? I think 1, 2, and 3 are absolute priorities, and also 9, 10, and 11. And then the others, certainly if there's an opportunity, that's something that could be looked at, but I don't have a problem with any of them. And I just would hope maybe we could prioritize 1, 2, and 3, because that's up there near the loop. And then 9, 10, 11 is a critical part of central... And then nine, 10, 11 is a critical part of, uh, Central Park, and actually a joint Central Park on a lot of the, in a lot of the areas, so. But does anyone else have comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent, then we'll go to Commissioner Selby.
My comment is, I agree completely, and the ranking, the exact way that you put them.
Me too.
Great. Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, Mayor, um, I, I definitely agree with nine, 10, and 11, adding those to Central Park. I think that makes a lot of sense. Plus, in sort of looking at those parcels, I think they'd be very difficult to develop. Um, I, I don't, I don't support, I wouldn't support, um, four, five, six, seven, or eight. Um, for, the primary reason is they're, they're proximity, they're already either zone commercial or they're zone, uh, conservation, or special, uh, area, special environmental, and, um, they're on US One, except for four, which is really, I don't think we should be buying commercially zone property along US One, or the government should, the public should, I think those should be developed commercially. The reason they haven't been developed is they're really tough properties to develop. I mean, the, um, the ones five and six are basically totally swamped. You know, that's, those are the goldy properties there, that, um, uh, so, and then as far as one, two, and three go, I think we, um, I, I have talked to Mr. Collins in the past, I think he's potentially, um, I, I, I think there's probably a very, um, willing seller there, and maybe even, you know, maybe even more than just a seller. Okay, so, um, so, yeah, I'm pretty much in agreement with you, um, except that really four, five, six, seven, and eight, I don't think those are all, have, have some potential commercial development and should remain, you know, for that. Oh, and I also wanted to say that I really appreciate staff taking the initiative on this. In my mind, this sort of grew out of the Tamoka Oaks discussions, where we heard a lot of people saying the city should be doing, you know, should, why didn't the city buy Tamoka Oaks, why didn't initiate this, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, so I think this is really good, that staff, that you've taken it upon yourselves to initiate this process, because I sort of envisioned that, that the public, you know, that somebody in the public would do this, but the reality is that's probably, you know, it's, it's probably, probably better to have it start with staff, get it out there, and then see if these sellers are willing, and then, uh, then we can also get public opinion from that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Um, and I could, I'd be fine to vote for one, two, three, and nine, 10, and 11, and just leave four through eight out of it at this time, um, or prioritize one, two, three, nine, 10, and 11, and put four through eight lower down, whatever. Commissioner Kent?
Yeah, you know, I, um, one of the things I love about, uh, elected bodies is, uh, you listen to, to people, you don't have your mind made up before you come here, and, and they can sway you either way. And I think Commissioner Selby brings up a good point about the possibility of that commercial property being utilized, and, uh, it brings me back to the not-so-distant future when, um, you know, we had some healthy discussions with, uh, some of our residents and, um, this commission about corridors like Granada Boulevard and US One, and what should be on those roads. And, uh, that's where I think we expect to see commercial development, so with that, Mayor, um, I would be fine, I think, if, you know, I haven't heard from the rest of the commission, but if we prioritize one, two, three, and then nine, 10, 11, and then just left four, five, six, seven, eight off of it completely, I, I'd be fine with that.
Is that a motion? It sounds like.
It is, it is a motion.
On four, five, six, seven, and eight, though, are they, are those environmental areas?
They, they are, they, they have, but, um, other mosquito control canal, so they all have, uh, Mr. Selby, or Commissioner Selby was correct, they have a special environmental and at least a part of the land. So they are, um, there's a reason they haven't developed, they have wetlands, they have, you know, low, uh, basement elevations, which require a lot of filling, so they are what we would consider environmentally significant lands.
Then, then I would not be in favor of omitting them. I would think they need to be on, on the list.
Mayor, can I, can I amend my motion, then? I'll, I'll amend it, and, because I don't think we're gonna get all of them. So I think the way I, I can solve this is prioritize them in this order, one, two, three, nine, 10, 11, and then, um...
Four, five, six, seven, eight.
Well, I was, I was gonna make it a little stickier, but, I was gonna do that, eight, seven, six, five, four, yeah, that's what I was gonna do.
So, all we're doing is going to approach the property owner, there's nothing that's gonna prohibit the property owner from filing his own application with, uh, Volusia Forever, so.
Sure.
We're just asking for your guidance on that, so it doesn't prohibit the property owner from...
To make it easy, Mayor, the motion will, from me, will be prioritize in this order, one, two, three, nine, 10, 11, eight, seven, six, five, four.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll have to vote no, because I don't believe that we should encourage the conservation of commercial property along US One, so.
Understood. And they're, they're free to say no, obviously, the property owners, but.
I would just ask, so what we would send to the Volusia Forever board is gonna be the pro- this list minus those who don't want to sell, or?
So, what, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna attempt to contact property owners, the ones that we know, we'll, we'll contact by voice, uh, by telephone call and email, the others will send a, a, a letter, we have them ready to go. So each one of the property owners can tell us that they're not interested, and then it stops. So if they say that they are interested, we'll ask them to fill out the form, and then we'll, we'll put in the, uh, supporting documents, the maps, the, the answer of the criteria. So I think we have the ability to help property owners who are interested, because we can produce maps and, and, and justifications.
Great, okay. I was just gonna ask if you could really help them with the applications.
Yes, we, we would absolutely do that, for those who are willing.
Great. Any other questions or comments? I would just say, uh, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to say it, but I'll put it out there, seven and eight, because they're so close to our water treatment plant, at some point, I'd like the city to look at those for a reuse storage area. Uh, I can't get excited about building tanks, but if we could do something like Port Orange did with a huge, uh, lake, uh, that just seems like there's a possible opportunity there to make the impact that Commissioner Selby and Commissioner Littleton have been talking about, really all of us, I think, would favor on our reuse issues, so that's just a comment, it's not staff action or anything like that. All right, with that, I'll call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
No.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we will move to reports, suggestions, and requests, and start with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, we appreciate your direction on that item. Um, just for your, um, edification, we have our first, uh, OB/ Life meeting, 2021, uh, Western Focus, that is next, um, Tuesday, begins at seven at Calvary Church. Um, as in the past, um, the commission is invited to attend, but this is really a public meeting for the residents to participate. Um, we have also invited Beatt Colley to attend, he's the Avalon Daytona CEO, and, um, we made clear to him that he was welcome to listen, but was not able to participate, because we don't want someone to try to persuade someone differently, we just want to present them with the information. We believe that this particular series is for us to provide information to our residents and understand what their issues are, so that we can advocate on their behalf, and that's the whole purpose of, of, of these meetings. So that kicks off, um, next Tuesday night, we've done ads in both the Ormond Observer and, uh, the Hometown News. We have, um, sent, um, emails out to, uh, members of the community, like we've done last time, we did a, uh, I sent emails out to community leaders. In addition, we sent emails to everybody that participated previously with the OB/ Life. I think we had 140 people interested online, is that correct, Ken? Um, so, we feel like that's a good turnout. This time, we will also have an opportunity for Zoom participation, uh, for those people that may not want to come, so if, uh, the, um, Leisure Services Department used a similar process for the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and they had a good turnout there, so we're hopeful for a good turnout. Um, Calvary Church has been very, um, helpful and gracious to us in the past, um, so we appreciate, uh, their willingness to partner with us, and that's really all I have, unless you have any specific questions for me tonight.
Any questions?
Yeah, Joyce, did you say 7:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
Okay, 6:00 PM, yeah, that's what I had on my calendar. Uh, yeah, I have a question, um, what's the, what's happening with redistricting?
So we will, um, we're looking at that internally, we, the city attorney's office and, um, the city clerk's office are working with GIS to look at maps, and we'll get a schedule for you to take a look at internally. There wasn't much shift, but there was some shift in the zones, I think it's about 300 people, people type, I don't know if anybody's here for that. So, we'll be, uh, bringing that schedule to you probably, um, next meeting or the meeting after that, have a public workshop on it, and then, um, across the board.
Thank you. Great. Anyone else? If not, we'll move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant city manager Claire Whitley.
No comments tonight, thank you.
And city attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you, good night.
And we start tonight with deputy mayor Persis.
Great. Well, good evening again, everyone. Um, I just, my, my first comment is, is very exciting, um, we, uh, we, the city of Ormond Beach, um, honored our first responders last week, we went to the Ormond Beach Fire Department, we went to the Ormond Beach Police Department, and, um, Joyce Shanahan did a great job of speaking and letting everyone know how much we appreciate them. It was really a wonderful occasion to, to attend and see the, the big, I don't even know what that car is, that the police department had, that big, what's it called, chief?
MRAP.
And, what is it?
MRAP.
MRAP, like a Raptor, maybe, I don't know, but, an MRAP, and that was, that's pretty amazing. And then we go to the fire department, of course, we see wonderful firemen there, and we see this, you know, our great fire trucks that, that are just beautiful and state-of-the-art for our firemen, so it's just a wonderful thing, and I know we all like to show our appreciation to our first responders any way we can, and, um, just personally, I want to say thank you to all of you, you, for everything you do for our citizens in Ormond Beach. I think we have a first-class safety department for sure. Um, also, on last Saturday, we had the opportunity to cut the ribbon for the Rick Bohm Girls softball field, and it was just a fabulous occasion, um, and I want you to know, um, deputy, I mean, um, uh, Commissioner Kent and Commissioner Selby, that you were mentioned, and everyone knows you had family obligations, and your words were very much appreciated that were read. Um, but it was just a great experience, and that softball field is absolutely fabulous. When I walked out there, I was like, this is like Field of Dreams, like, I just want to go out there and play softball, I, I just, it was just, it's just amazing, so I'm so thrilled that our young women, our young ladies, and are gonna get to use that field and have state-of-the-art facilities, just like the guys do, so I think it's, it was just awesome. And former Commissioner Bohm, this was absolutely thrilled, his kids were there, his wife, and it was just a, a very special occasion for him. I know he was very, very honored and deeply, deeply appreciative of this, I just wanted to let everyone know that. And with that, I'll say good night, thank you.
Great. Uh, thank you. Commissioner Littleton?
I have no comments to add. Good night.
That's perfect, and Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick comments. First of all, um, thank you to Mr. Sargent for the suggestion of another K-9. Um, we will, I will, uh, present that to the Ormond Beach Police Foundation, and I think we, um, I, I'm pretty confident that the board will be, uh, will find that as a, as a very worthwhile, um, suggestion, expenditure. Um, the, the, uh, but, when, um, when it became apparent to me that I was not gonna be able to attend the Rick Bohm dedication, I actually called Rick, and, uh, I basically asked his permission to miss the event. I said, "Rick, I, you know, I want your advice, my grandkids are playing T-ball in Orlando, uh, at 9:00 AM, uh, Saturday morning, you know, what should I do? Should I come to your ribbon cutting, or should I go be with my grandkids?" And he was, he was unequivocally supportive of me going to Orlando to be with my grandkids, which I knew he would say, okay? But nonetheless, I wanted to let him know, I wanted, I, I really did want to discuss it with him, and I wanted him to know, wanted him to know that under any other circumstances, I would have been there, especially because of, you know, for anybody who doesn't know, he spent years in the leisure services area, uh, building up programs and coaching kids and, uh, running activities and encouraging the city to, to build and, and spend more money on, uh, on facilities. And my final comment is, public safety, the first responders appreciation, I, I have had my, uh, first responders, we appreciate first responders, sign in my front yard for, for over a year now, you know, since before, uh, last year, it's been up that entire time, so I'm really happy to say that. I, I, I firmly believe that the single, the number one priority of a city is public safety, police and fire. That is the single most important thing to keep its citizens safe. So I'm a huge supporter of that, and I think the event went very well, and, um, and the, the, the token gifts, as, as, uh, city manager Shanahan put it, um, hopefully were very well received by our, by our police and our fire. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Commissioner Kent?
Thank you, and I'll pick up right where Commissioner Selby left off, but I'm gonna add one, I would agree, the most important things a city can provide its residents are public safety through police and fire. And the third one is public works, because I've lived through a water crisis, and let me tell ya, when you, when you experience that, you realize that is as important, um, for your residents. So I agree with you, Commissioner Selby, I'm just gonna add the third one. Commissioner Rick Bohm, I've gotta tell ya, I really enjoyed serving with him on this dais many, many years, and Rick and I, when, when he came off the commission, we, we became friends, and I'm, I'm careful with who I allow in my circle, um, who I allow around, around my family, um, you know, I, I take that stuff seriously, and Rick is someone that's in my circle, and he is, he's a good man, and my favorite thing about him is that he's a phenomenal father, he's a great dad, great dad, lucky kids to have a dad like that. Um, and Dee's great also, but this isn't about Dee, this is about Rick, so I'm gonna keep it just with Rick. But I was sick to my stomach when I realized the trip that my wife set up with Wyatt and I was on that same day, and Joyce, I wanna publicly, I've already thanked you twice privately, but I wanna publicly thank you for reading my comments at the event, and, um, Rick and I had, had a great discussion, and just like with you, Commissioner Selby, I knew what he was gonna say, which is family first always, and make those memories with, uh, your kids especially. Um, Joyce, can Chief of Police come up for just a quick moment, because Mr. Sargent brought up an idea, and, um, Commissioner Selby is talking about a group he's involved in, so Chief Godfrey, as you're coming up, it, what's the number, the price tag, on, um, getting a, another, another K-9 unit, dog like Kane?
First of all, good evening, and thank you for having me up here. Thank you, Mr. Sargent, that was a very nice gesture. Um, I don't know the exact number, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 10,000 to 20,000, and the reason why I say that is, uh, there's some, not only the purchase of the, of the dog, but you also have to train.
Right.
The handler with the dog.
Sure.
They have to be compatible, so.
Sure.
It's somewhere in that area, and we, and we were actually allowing Officer K-9, uh, Hyatt, Kane's handler, some time before we even discussed.
Sure.
Replacement, so to speak, so.
Sure.
Uh, we've quite, kinda just given him his space, and, uh, out of respect for him and his family.
Sure.
Uh, but I can get those numbers and get them to.
Well, you, you answered it, Chief, you answered it with the, the, the range of 10 to 20, and I totally get what you're saying about the handler, Officer Hyatt. At the same time, there's a need in Ormond Beach for a K-9 unit, otherwise we would have never had one. Um, and I'm appreciative that Commissioner Selby, the group he's, he's, uh, involved with, uh, he'll bring that up to them. Um, but I would be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't jump on with, uh, what, uh, Mr. Sargent mentioned earlier tonight, and I don't want it to come out of your budget. Every penny you have, you need. So I, I will make a motion tonight, right now, to, um, take $20,000 out of our savings... take $20,000 out of our savings account, that is above our 15% threshold, $20,000, for the benefit of the citizens of Ormond Beach, to be used for another K-9 dog, and the training of that dog with whomever you choose, Chief, but I'll make that motion now.
I have a question, do you need more than one?
We have two, we had two, we, so yes, we have one that's active now, and then we had Kane that passed away-
Okay.
And I will tell you, there have been several citizens that have come forward and offered to buy or assist with buying a dog, so-
Carrying people.
I would ask that you at least let us take that into consideration before we spend any money, I, I don't know if that's correct or not, but you do have some, some citizens that want to step forward.
I appreciate hearing that news, and I'm fine with, you know, Ms. Shanahan can spend up to 25,000 without our approval, but she doesn't do that, because that's not how she rolls, and she's professional like that, but I'm, I'm comfortable with my motion stating up to $20,000, but don't have to spend every penny, depending upon how much money comes from any individuals that want to give.
Second.
Perfect.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It just seemed like a no-brainer, yes, sir, I shouldn't use that term.
I mean, I, the Ormond Beach Police Foundation has money in its budget, it has money in the bank, and I'm confident-
His motion left open the opportunity-
Right.
I mean, you could come in and pay for the whole thing.
Yeah.
Based on his-
Oh, I didn't, I didn't hear that in the motion, I heard, I heard we're gonna spend city money.
Didn't, didn't- We could if we had to, but it sounds like if you guys are gonna offer that, which would be wonderful, that would cover it, or there's other people in the community who have that strong desire to contribute, which would also be wonderful, or some combination.
Sure.
But, so, you know, you know Joyce, she's not going to spend money that she doesn't have to spend-
Sure.
So, I think that was just a little component, Commissioner Kent modified his motion that allowed you the option.
Very good. And, and Chief, as we, as you've done in the past, any private citizens that want to make donations, if they make them to the, the Ormond Beach Police Foundation, it's a charitable donation, you know, so-
It is a single donation.
Okay, very good.
Can I ask one more question, just, I know, the other dog, the other K-9 that you have, how old is that dog?
I think he's about five.
Okay, and how many years do they serve?
Typically, eight to 10, depending on how active they are.
Okay, just didn't know if we might need another one in reserve, getting ready.
You also have to have a handler who will serve it.
Right.
Okay, Judge, isn't that something that-
To think about.
-police officers, I mean, you have a list of people that are interested in that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we'll show that passing unanimously.
And my last comment for the evening is, if, I'll put this request out, you know, it used to be the old days, a commissioner could request whatever they wanted from staff, and they would do it, and we tightened that up a little bit, and said, you've got to have someone else that says this is a good idea, so that we don't just send you on a excursion to someplace that only one person is interested in, but I am interested in, Ms. Shanahan, you having, you and your staff, just looking into preliminarily, what it would take to hold our own marathon, half marathon, 5K, and then I want, you know, if, if someone's in agreement with that, I'd like for us, at some point in the future, to then discuss some ideas with the profit that, that we make, what we can do with it, if it's lowering our tax rate, which would be very little for every single person in the city, but maybe we look at specific, a specific day throughout the year, and we hold a community barbecue, and we have it in three or four different sections of our city, all at the same day, at the same time, and, you know, encourage, encourage our residents to come out and have a, have a, have a barbecue with, with their, with their, their neighbors and friends, and, and local residents alike, just, just an idea out there. And with that, I'll wait and see if anybody agrees and says, "Look into it," Ms. Shanahan, and, other than that, good night, everybody.
I think I agree, I don't see any reason not to look into it.
And maybe you can bring that back, Joyce, with the, with the Tamoca?
I don't have a problem with it.
It might be too much for that, okay, well, just whenever, whenever. The staff did a, thank you, Commissioner Kent, staff did a great job with Commissioner Bohm's celebration on Saturday morning, it was a perfect day, I mean, the weather could not have been better, the, the crowd who turned out to honor him, I mean, it had to be a great honor to have so many great people in Ormond Beach come out and say thank you. Joyce, you gave great remarks from Commissioner Kent, and a nice speech, and Robert, Carolyn, I think, has left, but he gave, oh, no, he's back there, the, one of the, probably the best speech I've ever heard him give, it was awesome, did a really nice job with that, so, thank you all for that. Let's see, the new police K-9, whenever that does happen, I would ask our staff if they could make that kind of an event from when we obtain the animal, whether it's a puppy or a little bit older, and then just, because I think our community falls in love with those animals, they certainly see them at all the different events, National Night Out, and everything that our officers go to, and it's, it's, you know, not only an important tool for the police work they do as far as fighting crime, but also an incredibly important tool for the public relations that they do, as far as interacting with our residents, young and old alike, and so, whatever happens with that, I hope there's a lot of social media around that, and, you know, whether it's a naming contest, or all the different things that, that I've seen other cities do, I think that's gonna be a, a great opportunity, coming out of the, the sadness of losing Officer Kane, to, to have a really big positive for our city. Joyce, last week, last meeting, Officer Pearson spoke during public comments, I don't know if he was speaking on behalf of the union, or just speaking on his behalf, but he gave us a book, and I was hoping that, and I don't think the commission would object, I think they would probably support it, but that between you and Claire, as we go into the bargaining time of year, that if you could create a chart that compares starting pay, mid-level pay, and, and top-out pay in our area, and then also include pension, vacation, insurance, and other benefits, I think in preparation for those negotiations, that would be information that the entire commission would want, kind of a spreadsheet that covers all those things, and maybe, honestly, you may have already started that, but I just wanted to not let Officer Pearson's remarks go unanswered, but let them know, we are listening, we do want to hear from them, and, and the other union groups, and so as we begin these bargaining times, would like to see that information provided to us at the appropriate time. The only other thing I had, I, I had a map of the seven and eight on that list for Volusia Forever, of a, it was a site plan for a proposed mobile home development, I think there were 35 or 40 mobile homes on it, and it just happened, one of the legal secretaries that I know was cleaning out a friend's garage, and she had those plans in there from like the late 70s or 80s, I think they're in my office upstairs, I provided a copy to Steve Spraker, and again, Commissioner Selby mentioned how difficult that area is to, to develop, those plans never went anywhere, they've been laying around 30 years, somebody paid good money to, to create them, but I just thought I'd bring up, if anybody's interested in looking at them, Stephen could either email it to you, I know he scanned it into, to their system, just for general knowledge, but wanted to bring that up while we were talking about it as well. And with that, we will be adjourned. Right at eight.